I'm sorry, I just called the meeting order and this is our regular meeting Tuesday, April 17th, 2018. And you got till midnight.
We'll read up the agenda tonight.
But first, the public service, you have till midnight to get your taxes to the IRS. We have a motion to approve this agenda that we have in front of us. I'll just quickly read it for the viewers at home. Approval of this agenda is number one. Number two is approval of our regular meeting minutes on March 20th, 2018. Number three, originally, we're going to reorganize. The select board didn't appoint any new members, so we're going to table that for now. Number four, we'll go through the mail. We'll entertain any public comment. Number five, our guest tonight is Michael Batchor from the BCRC. And then if there's other business, we shall discuss it. We have a motion from Mr. Smithers to approve this. Do I have a second?
Yes.
We have a second. Jim Winchester, any further discussion, additions or changes to this? If none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Nay.
I'll look over these March 20th minutes, but I'll need to abstain, having not been there Julie, you just need this sign for me?
Yes.
You don't need five forms of...
Identification.
Identification.
Yeah.
Can you spell your last name for me, so I can make sure I have it spelled right?
V is in Victor, I R E S.
E S. Okay, we had an extra vowel in there.
Thank you.
All right, I'll look for a motion for the March 20th minutes to approve. Any such, we have a motion from Mr. Winchester. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any further discussion or corrections to the 20th? If none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I abstain.
And I abstain. So, just a question, since we're not reorganizing, since we're not reorganizing, is this still your last night?
Well, you signed it. Isn't my last night? I didn't write my letter of resignation.
You haven't? Oh, I shouldn't have said anything, huh? Yeah, okay.
You might have forgotten.
Yeah.
No, I didn't forget. I've been waiting till reorganizing.
Well, that's why I was asking. Yeah. And I thought I'd wait till you got a candy in your mouth to ask you to say something.
And whoever takes over, I will share.
Okay, good. Good, all right. Well, that's what we were looking for, so. Let's go over the mail.
Oh, no. I have a letter from Bonnie Cutler, written resignation letter. Town over my Board of Selectmen, March 20th, 2018. Panel Planning Commission, resignation. I want to thank the panel select board for appointing me to the panel planning commission three years ago. After much consideration, I have decided to resign my position with the commission. The last three years, I've been a long road of hard work, met with much contention as of late between the commission members and the folks of the wonderful town I call home. Sometimes it's best to step back and open a door for another to step in and run with the ball. I want to wish the planning commission and the new appointee and my place the best in bringing forth a much needed town plan that will benefit the town of Powell. I appreciate your acceptance of my resignation. Sincerely, Bonnie Cutler. And the selectmen did accept it after March meeting.
Who read? Just read.
Does anybody want to read it?
I heard it. Yeah, I read it.
Now we have Williamstown Public Board, their planning board public hearing, April 10th, 2018, at 7:00 PM at the Williamstown building. The planning commission will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, the 10th, at 7:00 PM in the Williamstown building, in accordance to Massachusetts General law, Article A, to see if the town will vote to amend the Williamstown zoning bylaws, subsections 72, 3, 4, and 7, and the Williamstown man, Article B, to see if the town will vote to amend the Williamstown zoning bylaws, and Article C, to see if the town will vote to amend the zoning bylaws with the dimensional setbacks. I have that one.
I think they withdrew all of those.
And then I have a wastewater and potable water supply permit for Rondewayer, Rondewayer Properties LLC, which is down at the liquor store.
All right.
To get a replacement wastewater disposable system.
Saw Dicky Basson down there, he's from railroad tracks. Thought he was maybe digging up the tracks.
It's like the things of each field. It's 150 feet on the town, the other state, rather, had to move it some. I had to move it back.
Was it a single line, each field? Great big long one?
There's some tanks in there.
Yeah.
You just saw the line after that. There's some tanks ahead.
Tough site, pour a subject system in.
Yep, yes.
And then I have thing from BRCRC on a housing forum on 4/18/18, from 5:30 to 7:30 on Wednesday at the Bennington Housing Authority, 22 Villa Brook Drive, Bennington. It's a housing forum, overview of housing statistics from BRCRC, towns and villages, private, public, and nonprofit housing development action towns can take support local housing. And BRCRC annual Thursday, May 17th, 2018, 5:00 PM at West Mountain Inn in Arlington.
That's what, the annual meeting for the BRCRC?
Yep, and there's a dinner. And if you're going to go, you have to respond by May 11th. Here's the dinner menu.
How about tomorrow night's housing? Is there, was there a response for that, or are we still free to go?
No, I think you can just show up.
Okay. I didn't read the whole email.
Doesn't say RSVP. Too enticing to come, there's free refreshments.
And then I have another...
Good refreshments?
I don't want to do.
Well.
I'm gonna miss it.
You should. You're gonna be down here, right?
I'm here.
Well, that was what I sent Mike this note about this.
One of us should go. Do we have any other volunteers that would like to go to that tomorrow night?
I'd go to the other place.
You're going to the select board meeting? No. Oh, I thought you were talking about that. So, Sid and I had talked before you go on about one of us going tomorrow night. I'm more than happy to go, or I'm more than happy to go to the select board meeting, doesn't matter. To me, we can toss a coin when the day's done. And anybody else, is anybody else going to the select board meeting tomorrow night? You might go? Okay. Is anybody else interested in going to this?
Housing forum.
Housing forum. Owen?
I'm going to the select man.
You're working tomorrow night, you can't go. Okay, we'll take care of it, sorry, Julie, interruption.
And the other mail is the Williamstown zoning bureau, Board of Appeals, public hearing Thursday, April 19th, at 7:00, upon the petition of Justin Washburn to bury the side dimensional required of the general resident zoning district, construct an exterior emergency escape stair at 44 Linden Street. This petition is heard in accordance to the old Williamstown. And then the other one is a property, upon the petition of Silver's Therapeutics Inc. for a special permit for a marijuana retail establishment at 238 Main Street.
That's in Williamstown.
Yeah.
Yeah. And the shop is...
Oh, the old colonial pizza.
And then continuing from previous month, 2017, 7...
Right next to the drugstore.
Horizon Wireless for special permits, variances for the installation and operation of a personal wireless facility and tower at 1161 Gold Spring Road.
That's down at the back of the restaurant, right at Route 2.
Coyote Flaco.
No, the restaurant, right across from the bakery?
Oh, the Russian lady's bakery there.
No, it's Richard Sutter from Windsor's.
Wasn't her a Russian woman? I'm sorry. I know where you mean, the A-frame, across the iconic restaurant.
Across the street, they're planning on putting a 90-foot or 120-foot monopole. Neighbors are all up in arms about it.
Can't understand that. Anything else, Jules?
Half a minute.
We're good? Thank you very much. Since we have no public comment, we'll move on to our special guest, Michael Batchor, who, I missed the last meeting, but I've heard great things about it. We're going to talk a little bit more tonight about siting for solar, I believe, just solar, right?
We're just talking about wind too.
We can talk about wind too. All right, I'll turn it over to Mr. Batchor.
Okay, well, here's a totally revised Chapter 8. It's not done. I'm not happy with it yet.
You're not?
But you guys need to read it, give comments, thoughts, and things like that.
Okay.
Maybe we didn't get one.
Me. We need to read that at a different time, not tonight, right?
Well, you don't have to read it, but I'm gonna kind of go over some of the basics.
Okay.
I'm gonna need to move your microphone thing.
Are you guys getting it?
Pretty warm.
Yeah, now it's getting toasty.
It was cold in here.
It was, before, you're right.
You know, rain just... However, you must.
You're casting his microphone off. You're not making it work very well.
Well, we can do the talking. So, this is a map of panel. Okay, north is this way, seven, probably know where everything else is. The, what this map is showing is two layers, one of potential areas for solar, and one for potential areas of wind. So, solar has these colors, the yellow and the whatever that is.
Mauve.
And wind has the blue and the green.
Okay.
Now, these are based, I think we've talked about, that there were computer models done to generate where solar could occur based on a series of topographic characteristics, and where wind could occur based on elevation and where winds were likely to occur.
Not be...
In all of the white areas, the possibility for either of those is not good. Now, this is not including any environmental constraints, other than those that would determine whether where wind or solar could go. The only one...
Not, doesn't include wetlands.
Doesn't include wetlands, doesn't include floodplains, doesn't include agricultural soils. This is the total potential. And one of the things that need to have in your plan is where are the potential resources? So, here's the starting point is...
This is the three-phase power, one-mile radius.
As best we know, as Ronnie said, that's been extended, but I don't have information on that, so unless you guys can draw, I'd be glad. You want to draw me the three-phase lines, I will extend that, but I don't know where they are. So, you have to draw them. I'll give you a pen.
So, wait, this is a best guess, then?
About one mile.
Okay.
But do they really go up and down here?
Boy, it looks like it to me.
I don't know where your map is. It's hard to me to decipher this.
Route 7.
Route 7. He's got the circle there, and it's outside the circle. Route 7 is probably in. Where's Macmolden? Where's the tannery?
Down here.
All right, that's in the circle. Macmolden's gotta have three phases.
Macmolden's back here.
Race Track's got three phases.
Yeah.
It runs down Burrington Road, that's all along, that's Old Route 7.
Right. So, that'd be up...
And it runs all the way from up there in Bennington.
Yeah.
Goes to Bennington Line, down to...
Is this three-phase, in here?
Right to the Bennington Line.
Yeah.
So, it's gonna go out here, right?
So, why don't you draw that, why don't you draw in here that this is three?
That's too wide an arc, from here up to there, and from here up to there.
Well, just draw, I'll do the arc, I'll back and use my magical computer to do that. Is there any other three-phase line that we, that's not shown here besides? It's basically the three-phase of these lines, it look kind of like a, well, they look like power lines.
I don't know, Ronnie, where does it go once it leaves North Powell?
Does it go to the border?
Doesn't go out to New York, doesn't need to.
No, it don't go to New York.
Doesn't need to.
But it goes all the way down 346, quite a ways.
Right, so it goes...
Goes down at least to North Powell Road.
Okay, well, we have it going right up there.
Or Powell Road.
Yeah, no, North Powell Road, I know. Dark Woods.
Used to be the Dark Woods.
Dark Woods. Yeah, that's right here.
But that's all due to the sewer.
Anyplace that the sewer encompasses, you got three phases.
Oh, so here's where three-phase goes back up to join into Route 7.
It crosses Route 7.
So, none of this is three-phase out here.
Well, this is within the...
Within the one-mile.
Yes.
Yeah, gotcha. Oh, and there's one mile.
Yes.
And then, so you'd be here.
Yep. But is there anything else that's missing?
Changes?
I don't believe so.
That's the selectmen's changes. Well, we forgot, I didn't get that part yet.
Where's this three-phase? It joins in a power line, goes over the mountain?
Around the Conroe.
I think it goes, is that South Stream?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it goes the South Stream, but doesn't go along...
Is this South Stream right here?
Yeah, but it doesn't go along South Stream.
So, it goes over the mountain.
Okay, well, you got it ending right here.
Right.
It goes somewhere.
The Stanford.
It may go right over those power lines.
That would be new, we don't, I wonder if they do that.
I don't know, it may tie into the main high-voltage towers.
Yeah, they can't, as far as I know, they can't tie directly into main...
Oh, they can't?
No.
It has to go to a specific...
On power lines, you go over the mountain, they have nothing to do with this three-phase stuff.
You know what I mean, though? Ron, it ends right here.
Turns up over North Powell, too.
Yeah.
Goes right up over the mountain. Out of simply, at least, down there in your state, over the mountain.
This three-phase...
Goes up over that mountain.
Three-phase ends right here, and I was just asking Michael if he knew where it went.
As far as I know, it stopped.
So, this is South Stream Road, here. But as far as he knows, it just stops there.
Yeah. So, the newest one would be the Route 7.
Okay. Right, that'll be the only change out here, that or in there. Okay. Good.
So, basically, it's a lot easier to create energy source if you can tie the three-phase within a mile. Otherwise, it gets really expensive. Apparently, I was talking to Joel Burrington, and putting certain facilities at the town highway garage is possible, but not if, if they get too big, then they have to, if it's small, they can tie into a radar line. If it's bigger, they have to tie into three-phase, and that's more expensive if someone needs a line all the way to three-phase, and there's not that much three-phase.
What section of town was that, that you just drew a line on?
This is...
I don't know.
Over here?
No, towards the top, towards Ronnie.
Going up the...
This is Route 7, to the Bennington Line.
Yeah. All those new poles presumably are three-phase.
I'm just making up.
Okay.
So, the, having missed the last meeting, I apologize, but what is, these are prime, yellow is prime, there are possible constraints?
Yes.
Under solar here, would you give me just an example of what a possible constraint would be, like a mountainside, or hillside, or... Let's go to the videotape.
Good, we're good with this map?
All right, that's all you needed on that one?
This is in your, the thing I handed out. I'll leave it after, but they're smaller.
Yeah, a little tiny, guys, huh? Okay.
That way, you can't see all my mistake.
All right.
I'm not happy with the map.
Resources and constraints.
So, there are two kinds of constraints, and this is very difficult to explain, because it's, there's some logic lost here. They were called known constraints, and they're possible constraints. So, a known constraint is something where someone has documented, like, here's a good one, the floodway. You guys know the difference between the floodway and the flood, and the 100-year flood zone? Okay, those are two special flood hazard areas. One is defined by FEMA, based on if you were to construct in there, what kinds of impacts would you have in terms of raising the elevation of water in the floodway downstream? The second is how far will water rise during a 1 in 100 chance event?
That's a floodplain.
That's a floodplain, they're different things. So, a known constraint is the floodway, a possible constraint is the floodplain. Now, when you think about it, we have good data on both of them, so why one is known and one is possible? See where I'm going? There's not, not really solid there. But basically, the Public Utilities Commission is standing for certain issues, if you find, if you have a report or document that documents the possible constraint, then it's good to, it's good to add that as another constraint.
Okay.
What we've basically been doing is considering any of these, whether they're known or possible, as problems of constraints stopping. So, if you look at all these different colors, which include large flourish blocks, wetlands, agricultural soils, open space lands, all of these things that are listed down here, that are also described in the document I gave you, that covers up a lot of turf in Powell. Doesn't cover up everything, but these red areas, I guess it's red, and these are the areas that basically remain as unconstrained. Okay? And what I did is I made a distinction between these two, of the red being areas where these are bigger than five acres. Because I thought, well, you wouldn't want, if you had, if you had 500 acres of great solar, and it was all in patches the size of this room, it wouldn't be a whole lot of good.
No.
But if you can identify the big chunks, you can put a lot more in a big chunk than you can in a little chunk. So, I made three distinctions, but I'm showing bigger than five acres and one to five acres. One to five acres is still big enough to put a fair amount. Powell, yeah. Well, there's a North Bennington Variety Store, do you ever go by there?
Sure.
There's a, it says right there, it's 100 kilowatts, and that's, and that's, if that's an acre, I'd be surprised. It's just a small patch, so you can put a fair amount.
And Green Lantern's looking at 150 kilowatts, and they're not big pieces of land.
So, all in all, I have the numbers in your plan, but you have, I think, something, oh, hold on, let me look it up. I made you all kinds of great tables in that.
Just for example, race tracks eight and a half acres.
Yeah.
And it's the perfect thing for the flood, because it goes into the, but it doesn't go fast, or whatever, it just floods out into the...
I basically came up with, hold on, give me a second. I came up with something like 800 and some acres in the town that were not affected by any of these environmental constraints, and that were bigger than five acres, but let me check that.
So, some of these red ones are bigger than five acres?
Yeah, for solar, greater than five acres, with no constraints, I'm sorry if I exaggerated. I came up with 367 acres.
Okay.
And one to five, 338 acres. So, that's a fair amount of land.
How many property owners is that?
That, I don't know.
Okay.
Now, we go to the next map. So, that's solar.
Okay.
For the wind, but it's solar.
Not going too far with that one, right?
Well, that, that, is that helpful to give you a sample?
Very helpful.
So, when, when you're asked, when this is evaluated, you say, well, what are the existing resources here, the, we've just given you two...
Doesn't matter to us right now, what's one acre, five acres? Some of those reds are five and greater, and some are one to five.
Some of the reds are greater than five.
All reds are greater than five, got it.
The yellows are one to five.
Got it, got it, got it.
I'm sorry, Mike, I was reading something else when you mentioned, having talked with Joel Burrington, about solar installation on the town highway buildings, and he said it couldn't be done, or...
No, he said that couldn't get very large, went out that area, because the three-phase was too far, that's what he had been told.
Then it gets expensive.
But they could still build something smaller, they could build a 150 kilowatt, which is, can be, I guess, can hook into the...
Regular lines.
I'm not an expert, that's my understanding.
Okay.
And that's why, because we're, because I was asking him about that, because there's interest in doing something at the landfill slash transfer station, and the highway garage is just up the road, and he's got a nice big building with a nice big roof, and some land around it, though, some that they're using for their gravel supplies and the like. So, here are the preferred sites we talked about last time. Okay? Some of these, and correct me if I'm wrong, because I wasn't sure if I got all of these correct, but basically, these are the ones we talked about, the ones that are yellow are existing, that could be expanded, and the other ones are potential.
And you've left off from your key, you've left off number three, but I think that is...
Probably because I made a mistake.
Oh, no, it's pretty obvious you did, yeah.
Yeah.
But that's up near North Powell.
Three was supposed to be, yeah.
I think that may be the...
The rise roof.
Might have been.
Dean Road.
Oh, yeah.
Used to be Barlow's gravel bed, now it's Maxon.
No.
No, I was talking about the roof on the building that used for salt storage.
Oh, yeah.
It's right here, right?
Well, you guys talked about one called the warehouse.
That's the warehouse.
That's number 11.
Yeah, got it. And number three is the wastewater treatment plant.
Probably, yeah.
Yeah. So, there's the shed.
All right.
What's this one here, up at the quarry?
That's...
Or is that up in the field behind?
That's the Dodge.
Cleveland Dodge.
Cleveland Dodge is...
Clay Hill.
I should have put the numbers.
Cleveland, probably.
Nine, number nine. There's the Dean Road, existing one. So, this is Macmolden.
Can you correct 14? No, it's not Barlow's.
14 is what? Lushu.
14 is Maxon.
Maxon, right.
Yeah.
Which is the old Barlow pit, right? Just before.
Lushu.
Is what Julie's saying, that's the land right, owned by Priscilla Maxon, right, right before it. So, that's a rooftop.
I didn't outline that boundary, that property, because I wasn't sure whose property we're exactly we're talking about, because there's a couple properties back there, I wasn't sure whose.
What are these guys, so this is down at Tam, or this is Tan?
There's Tam, there's the American Legion, and there was the Firehouse.
Legion, Firehouse, Tan, okay.
And then we had the school and the...
School here, 10 and 5.
Oak Hill.
Oh, so Oak Hill is, yeah, right, right across.
And most of this, we were talking about rooftops.
Yes, yeah, right.
And how about these two? I don't, that just, they just fit the bill based on the plenty of sun all day long?
The, um...
Transfer station.
Transfer station, highway garage.
Okay, got it.
You can't put them solar panels on, that has to be, if they put it on a metal roof, it has to be on stand and seam, can't be unscrewed on roof, okay? And you can't put them on slate roofs.
These are you guys' suggestions of where you'd like to see them.
And all I'm saying is, is what they require.
Right.
If you inquire into it.
Right.
Ain't what I care or not, but I've inquired, and they said, no, no, that's, we don't do it on.
Yeah, that makes sense, though.
And that, that warehouse is, that's a screwed on.
Screwed down.
That's not stand and seam.
So, they couldn't put panels on there, or they could not?
According to the, the people that tried to sell me solar, I don't know, maybe somebody else could, I don't know.
Where are they gonna put them, is it tannery, just in that?
That's it, on a tannery property, that, that's, uh, your warehouse.
And the warehouse, that's all.
But are they really gonna put them, literally, are they gonna put them in the field?
Oh, I think they're gonna talk about putting them in the field, giving you this.
Up on the.
They got a field.
Okay.
It's covered discussion acres out there. They got a place at the end of Dean Road.
I already found one that's taped.
Down there.
So, these are the best sites based on the discussion that the planning commission had last time, and the fact that these all fit.
Well, you were looking.
The planning commission's directive of, or directive or preference of usable land.
We sat and talked with them last time, and this is what we can have.
Good, yeah, you have others, you can add them, you wanna take some off, we can do that too.
Yeah.
However you wanna go.
I have no objection to any of these.
You weren't here.
Well, I'm looking at them now.
Yeah.
I didn't object that night either, sure.
Now, part of the reason I'm not happy with that plan I've given you, but it's a start, is that it doesn't define why preferred sites are, the, the whole issue of they get a better deal in terms of their payout they get for selling electricity, we need to explain that more, that's one of the advantages of a preferred site, the Public Utilities Commission gives a higher rate.
And we know that, you know that for a fact.
Yeah, well, I know it's true now, I don't know what'll happen two years from now or five years.
Is there verbiage that the?
Somewhere, yeah.
TUC?
Yeah, I spent a lot of time working on these maps, so I didn't get a chance to dig into it.
Yeah, okay, alright.
And also, I wanted to get, get you guys something so we can continue moving along, I'd rather you tear that, tear that to shreds and have, have nothing, you know, you're looking at the same thing, which is at this point outdated.
Okay, so we're in agreement on this, right?
So, just to be clear, that document that they're considering doesn't include anything I've given you tonight.
Correct, that's right.
This is a whole.
Right.
New track.
Right, this would be the amendment to the as of yet approved town plan, energy section, is that what you mean?
Yeah. Does anybody have any other thoughts on additional sites, locations, anything?
Not I.
Okay, what we do.
I still got the same question, who picks them?
These?
Yeah.
You are, planning commission.
We chose these as our preferred sites.
No, I'm not, okay, I really.
Then a solar developer comes in, and he may say, I don't wanna go there, I wanna go over there.
Right.
That's what I said, who picks them?
Solar.
All we're doing is saying, we're giving a suggestion.
Right.
Yeah, that's all we're doing.
And that's all we really can do.
Yeah.
But you're also, you're also saying is you don't want them to go to any sites that have any of the environmental constraints we put on, because you have 367 acres of land that's greater than five acres where they could go, where they wouldn't be in a wetland, they wouldn't be in farmland, they wouldn't be, you've got plenty of soil, you put plenty of area for that.
Correct.
So, when the Public Utilities Commission reviews that project, they're gonna look at that and go, well, okay.
Yeah, they really don't want anything there, right.
How much are the financial incentives for choosing preferred sites?
I have to look it up.
Yeah, that's what he said he's gonna get.
Wind, I showed you where the potential wind was, so, if we put all those constraints on it, the red areas are where there are basically no constraints, they're very large, large areas where wind is potential, however, when you add the 1,000 meter buffer from a residence, that all goes away.
Yeah, there was like two little strips somewhere, wasn't there?
Yeah.
One right up here in the corner.
Way up in the mountain tops.
Above our house. So, this one wouldn't remain.
Yeah.
Out there near New York State.
Right, and it's perfectly reasonable to use that, basically say that commercial or, or I should say industrial scale, industrial scale wind, yeah, is not appropriate in panel, now, I think the thing you all need to think about is the smaller scale, how do you want to handle that, because there's a big red blob there in the middle where people could put residential or small, smaller commercial, but some of those are still pretty good size, they're over 100 feet tall, so.
Yeah, you see them going up Route 22 in New York, up near Virchun's and a lot of farmers have big.
Is that like at Hilltop?
Yeah, Hilltop.
Is that the?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And Hilltop, yeah, some of them are even bigger, as you described, I've seen them bigger in New York.
Hilltop's pretty small.
I have seen one that looks like Archimedes screw, have you seen those?
Yeah, they, yeah, they turn this way.
Yeah, and they're efficient at all?
I have no idea.
Because they are not.
I, I've been told they're not as efficient, but.
Craig Bodice has one over in, North Petersburg hasn't worked in five years, there was a problem with that.
No, I have one actually just within a mile where I live, it, it goes all the time, well, down in the windfall, it tends to go, I have no idea how much electricity it gets out of it, it's kinda neat looking.
The company that he bought it from went bankrupt before they made it good on the warranty, so it just sits there, unfortunately, um, I don't know how efficient they are or anything.
I mean, that's sort of an interesting question for people, I, and maybe Ron, you know more about it, is, it's probably a lot easier to maintain a solar panel than a wind turbine, I guess, there's a lot less to go, to break in a solar panel.
Correct, working parts, right?
Right, and I don't know who's responsible for that, but I mean, if, you know, your wind turbine dies, you gotta get the wind turbine repair person to come in.
So, let's, let's.
I don't know how easy that is, that's something.
Let's talk about some of these towers on personal property, and, you know, what I see them on is you go up, I, I take 22 a lot when I go up to Burlington or the, the lake up there, and you see several of them on farms, and, um, I don't really have any problem with any of our farmers putting in a individual tower that's not going to be tied to the grid or a commercial enterprise, is anybody?
Everybody pumped water for years, low west.
Yeah.
Right.
Well, they may tie it in the grid just so they make money when they're.
Well, they can, I mean, but it's still an individual, it's not.
Yeah.
Well, how big is Gardner's?
I don't know how big Gardner's is.
That was put into power, that, cell power to start with, and then the excess power went to the farm, but it hasn't run now in a couple of years, I don't think.
Really?
It's been a while since it has.
This is the, I've seen it spinning, but I'm thinking about the same one.
The one right over there.
Right up the hill here, yeah, spins all the time. Ron, you know how tall it is? Do you know how tall?
Oh, I don't know.
We did determine it.
All I know is what Marlon Gardner says, she likes to go up there on a nice summer day and sit under it and listen to the swish of the fan.
There you go.
There you go, see?
So, everybody's got their own thing, I don't know anything about it.
Alright, any, any other thoughts about those small, um, wind turbines in panel? Now, those have been available for a long time, we currently don't have any restrictions that I know of on those individual ones that, you know, that aren't commercial, and I haven't seen them, a great proliferation of, of these.
I think part of it, I mean, we looked into it a little bit, because it's pretty damn windy at our house.
Yeah, right.
And, uh, it's, they're not, financially, there's not very many incentives for them, like, it's so much easier to get solar, you can get loans, you can get payment things, and I haven't really seen that for the wind.
And fewer moving parts and maintenance and.
Like you said, you gotta get.
Things like that.
Yeah.
So, that might be part of it.
Be easier to maintain, you gotta make a road.
So, you don't hear about wind, wind turbine install people like you hear solar people.
Do we need to address it at all, for the individual, uh, wind power? I mean, any more so than we've done in, in our existing, if we've even done so, I forget, in our existing, uh, section eight, um, that the select board's looking at?
Well, the, the thing's, like, they basically just said, you don't want things in certain places, but you still need to do more planning, so now you're doing the more, more planning, so.
We are doing more planning.
Yep.
On that.
Personally, I don't see any problem with it, if a person wants a personal windmill.
I would like to suggest, I would like to suggest that we do have a restriction on industrially size, industrial sized wind generation, and keep that away from existing homes, and whether, so, 1,000 feet is right, which is what you have on this.
1,000 meter.
1,000 meters, that's over 1,000 yards, that's a long way.
Yeah, that's a long way.
It's a long way.
That's a long way.
Yes, it is.
That apparently came from public meetings on the regional plan, people asked for that distance.
Yeah.
I mean, they put, uh, things over there at Jiminy Peak, they claim they work great, I don't know.
Disappled.
I mean, that, that's changed, uh, that's commercial.
Right, the ones down Route 43, going down 43.
Jiminy Peak's here, yeah.
And there's a few on, on Brody as well.
I don't, I don't know, I mean, that, but I don't think there should be any restriction as far as, if I wanted one of them, I mean, a good friend of mine in Alaska, he's got one that ain't much bigger than a pigeon, it makes a lot of noise because the blade goes around fast, but, look at, that's how he gets his power, that, and he's got two solar panels.
I think, I think for personal, personal, I'm talking about industrially sized, industrial sized, like the ones on Brody Mountain, or the ones.
Searsburg.
Searsburg, or east of North Adams.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
So, industrial scale is inappropriate on other scales.
But individual or personal or?
It's fine.
Two is fine.
Do, do we want any height requirements on any of those?
Well, I think at some point you have to put, you have to put lights on if they're taller than, if they're in the light.
Yeah. But there are no one here is, uh, you've got the people that are anti-everything, and they're, you know, they talk about all the dead birds, there ain't no dead birds around them things.
How high are yours?
Anybody I know that lives around them things, they said, well, you're crazy, there ain't no dead birds up here, and blades don't, first of all, they don't go around very fast, they got brakes on them, that's why, that's how they're designed, they're designed to put out power at a certain speed, if it's, if the wind's blowing real hard, they still only go around just so fast, I mean, it's, uh, and like I said, some people, wow, they just don't like the appearance of them, well, okay, but, I, they don't bother me, because I'm not looking out in the sky at more Brody, but I guess maybe some people do.
Um, it does bother some people.
It does, I grant you that, that's right.
And a couple people had very expensive homes down there that they had, and those things were built right over them, and they claim they can hear them down in the valley.
Well, if I hear the discussion you're talking about, no industrial.
Correct.
Residential and commercial.
Let's get that square.
Okay.
So, we're gonna basically say in there somewhere that commercial, uh, or industrial is inappropriate, given all the parameters.
No industrial is inappropriate.
Pardon me? Commercial. You don't wanna?
No, you can go where you want, I don't, I'm trying to understand, we started with industrial without.
What's the difference between commercial and industrial?
Industrial is.
I said industrial.
If, if, uh, Mac Molding wants to put one in to power their plant, that's industrial, right?
There's actually a little chart in here, I want you to take a look at that.
Commercial is, they wanna sell it like down at Jiminy Peak, that's a commercial operation. Now, maybe I'm confusing the two, Michael.
Well, let me, let me take a look at my, let me find my little table here.
Wouldn't be the first time.
Sorry, I can't hear you, it's a little time. One page, in there.
Talking about your new e- energy piece or the old one?
It's, it's in, it's in both, but we can look at the new one, so we're on the same page. Oh, there you go, on pages, page is 18, on page 18 at the bottom, there's residential, which is 98 feet tall, commercial, which is 154 feet tall.
Okay, commercial is that?
And large scale or industrial is 230 feet tall.
Oh, okay.
So, indu, large scale or industrial, what's always called industrial is what they're putting up in the mountains.
Right.
So, I say residential by this definition is, is fine, and commercial and large scale are not.
I agree with that statement, everybody else?
Go through the process.
So, the only thing that we think is fine is residential, which would then take care of the farmers if they want.
Right, yeah.
Can we look at our bylaws safer a minute?
Well, well, I'll put it to motion if somebody wants to make that motion.
How tall were the commercial ones, Mike?
Wait, can we?
154 feet.
Can we look at our bylaws?
Industrial ones are 200 and something?
The wind, like, right now in our bylaws, on page 14, it talks about the wind energy facilities.
Go ahead.
That's right, give me a second. Tower should be, you know.
Want me to read?
I was looking for.
Wind energy facilities under the present bylaw, uh, talks about setbacks from lot lines, for rotors 20 feet in diameter or less, setback is 275, I'm not gonna get into all of this because it gets very complicated, the height of any wind turbine, as measured from average grade, shall be less than 200 feet, and have a minimum blade clearance from the ground immediately below each turbine of 20 feet, wind turbine towers shall meet the height requirements for the district in which it is located, or with a variance which may be granted by the DRB, DRB shall not grant variances that exceed 20 feet above surrounding structures or trees, this is, this bylaw is, was drafted at a time when wind energy was not much in use or being developed.
Correct, and it's all superseded by the Public Utilities.
Yeah, yeah.
Just my personal, so.
So, we would, but however, Julie, it, it does, we would change those bylaws to reflect.
I know, but I was just saying how.
It's good to have it here.
Everything may work.
I don't, I don't think the bylaws impact.
You delete it, you can't regulate.
So, you just delete that portion, you get rid of those height requirements, well, how about setbacks, though? You can't even do that.
Not if it's tied to the grid, it's not tied to the grid, you can, I don't know how you're gonna figure that one out.
So, once again, we'll do setbacks for residential ones, setbacks.
If it's tied to the grid.
Yeah, good point.
You know they're gonna tie it to the grid.
Alright, well, that'll make our work easy in that part then.
But you could, you could easily in your plan say, if you're going to have, if residential or, we don't want commercial or, I'm, I'm just throwing this out, we don't want commercial or industrial or large scale, but if you want residential, then it, we, we, it should meet these kinds of standards.
Okay.
And see what happens, see what the Public Utilities Commission does, I have no idea.
Just recommendations that we have in there. Just recommendations that we have in there.
Forget it. Or they may go, okay, we'll give that deference. We don't know.
So that's what I mean. At least we have something in there and say, we would prefer them to be two hundred and seventy-five feet from property lines and things like that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
If, if those are good numbers and you wanna use those, we could do that. Do you wanna keep those numbers or do you wanna come up with something else? I, I, let me look at, I.
Height, your height numbers, you mean?
No, for setbacks and those kinds of things.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't recall the thought process that went into those when we redid that and.
When was that?
I, back in. That could have been fifteen, fifteen years ago. That may have been re-adopted, that language.
Let me, let me find out and get some information for you. That's, I'll, I'll look into like.
Yeah, there's some.
Cause I, I see you're going, it seems to me that if you were in a very dense. Residential area and you don't want everybody putting up a two hundred foot tower.
Right, exactly. Right next to your property line.
Yeah.
Yeah.
As it turns out. I only have large bills. I can't flip you a coin. Get a coin out and flip it.
Oh, are you weaving? Yeah. Was it something we said?
No.
All right. Heads I win, tails you lose.
Oh, come on.
All right, so heads, heads you go to the, uh, the planning, the.
It's heads. I go?
So you're gonna go see these guys? You go to the selectmen and I'll go to. Unless you have a.
That's fine.
Really wanna go to this housing thing?
No.
Doesn't matter. Then I'll go to the housing.
Okay.
So, all right, let me just describe what else I did in this so that. I, I started to. Do a track changer so you can see it. It was gonna be a gigantic mess. But I basically changed all the actions. I changed goals. I changed all kinds of things. So you want, you may need.
We have to read your new.
We gotta, we gotta go through that section.
Yeah.
And make sure you're okay with it. And, and understanding that there's, that there are other changes I think need to be made, but I can, I can hold off on those.
And you'll send us that wording that you were looking for. At the beginning of this. I forget exactly what it was.
Oh, the, the, um.
You don't wanna.
The words like, what was that?
Yes.
Yeah.
I'm gonna give this back. You can leave here for the time being. Why should I carry it around in my car? This is the village designation stuff. For when we get to do it.
Does helping you guys move along?
Yes, very much so. Very much so. All right, so do we, do we need, you were saying, uh, would you like a motion on that? At, at least Sid, while you're here, that, um, I'll. I'll hear a motion on the fact that we're going to say that panel is not suitable for commercial and industrial wind.
Big stuff.
Generation facilities.
Yes.
So moved.
Do I have a motion? Do I have a second? Is there any further discussion? On at least that part of it? If none, I'll say aye.
Aye.
And if you're opposed, nay?
I'll say a nay. I know I can't vote, but I'll say a nay.
Motion carries. You just did vote. Motion carries.
The only reason I say that is because I don't think anything should be known. It should be up to bringing it in front of the board, whatever. I don't care what it is.
Can I say something?
Yeah, say something.
It will be brought in front of a board, the Public Utilities Commission, and they can say, panel, we don't care what you put in your.
I, I'm not, I'm not, but I'm, I'm still going with the fact.
You're saying locally it should be talked about.
Well, sometimes, you know, uh, it should, what do they call it? Like, we, we passed things before with the, with the town plan. And they said, well, look, you could, uh, it's contingent or whatever. Well, that I can believe in, but just not allowed. It's contingent on what the. Whatever the boards think or whatever. Whatever you got for, rather than saying, no, it ain't a, I don't know what's gonna happen twenty years from now. I probably won't even be around twenty years from now.
There'll be a new town plan.
They will, they will. They possibly will. But I mean, it doesn't, yeah.
Do you want me to describe the changes I made in the town plan?
In, in, in number eight here? Or, or overall, yeah?
The big thing.
Would you mind?
We haven't gotten it for here. You gotta.
I'm sorry, Julie.
Are we all don't want this section first? Are we all don't want this?
We are. And what we need is a commission is some further discussion after Michael gets this information about.
Yeah.
Best practices on setbacks, et cetera.
Well, you guys give me comments or I give you.
For the residential.
Markups and stuff like that.
Yep. And we'll look over your section here.
Yep.
And mark it up.
Yep.
Is that it? Is that it for maps?
You want more?
No, I don't. It just.
You almost have the twenty.
You had them. I probably compelled.
That's enough. There's confusion enough.
I know, I was gonna say.
Let me roll them all up a bit. I'll, I'll.
Oh, you're doing them all together?
I can leave them here with you if you want.
No, we don't have no room.
Um, I'll take them.
Two.
I'll, uh, hey, I'll.
Do what you did with them before you bought them.
Is this Christmas wrapping paper?
I bet my kids, my kids would like.
Hey, that would be good. It's Christmas wrapping.
I'll, um, I'll take them. You want, you want, you want to dissipate anyway?
My son's really into them.
I can't even have a rubber band, which, which all.
You did have a rubber band.
I'm just kidding. I mean, do you need to keep them? I'm not gonna take them.
No, I'll, no, I'll, I'll take them. I wanna look at them.
Yeah, let's make it. That's fine. We'll, we'll play with them next time.
Rubber band?
You did have one. I know it. I saw it on there.
In your wrist too?
I shot it wrong.
Maybe it went flying.
You're the kid who was doing that in high school, huh?
I was always getting in trouble.
I remember. Spitballs. There you were, spitball.
High school, elementary school, but I was in trouble.
Can you find a rubber band?
There it is.
He found it. He found it.
Hey. Put that on your permit wire, would you?
Unless you're.
Know what happens when these things get out of hand.
I know what happens.
Explode.
Yeah, run that right down there. You'll be outside.
Hold on, doesn't break.
His chains are on right with it now.
All right. Now, tomorrow night, um, the Select Board has recommended some changes to our plan, so. Uh, Michael has summarized them. They're gonna discuss it further tomorrow night, see if there are any further changes. I spoke to Nelson last week. And the goal would be if they aren't, if there are no more changes. That, um. They would then go into their fifteen day period. Actually, no, tonight's deadline. Tomorrow night is the deadline for that. So tomorrow. If there are no more changes. They would go into their fifteen day period prior to March, May second, where they can't change the plan. The plan has to be available for the public. To look at before the May second public hearing. I think it's gonna be tight. I recommended that.
It's already tight.
I recommended that they, they've got till May seventeenth for the hundred and twenty day period. I recommended that they go one more week. Um, because it's gonna be too tight. In essence, what I mentioned to Nelson was that, what, you don't wanna get into a situation where. The, the law calls for this being available to the public for a full fifteen days prior to that public hearing. What if it doesn't get to the clerk and it doesn't, it's not made public until thirteen days or twelve days? You have to change your public hearing at that point. So if they finish this thing tomorrow at midnight, they're not gonna get it to the clerk. Um, they're not gonna have copies available. You're not gonna be able to crank out fifteen copies and drop them off at Winchester Store at. Twenty minutes at ten and things like that. Get them on the website. So I recommended that they change the date of that, of that hearing, that they hold their thing tomorrow night, make as many changes as they wanna make. Get them to Michael. And then, um, and then postpone it by a week. We also have to sign off on, on, uh, the section of the municipal planning code forty-three oh two. Which just basically says that the changes that the Select Board makes are in compliance with municipal planning law forty-three oh two or not. So by the, by that final date, what's supposed to be their final date, doesn't have to be, which would be the second one. We're supposed to have that letter available. We can't have that letter available until we're familiar with the changes. Now, I've been talking to Michael about it and just asking if any of the changes so far. Uh, have, do they go against, does it go against the grain of forty-three oh two? And he assures me that so far, none of those have. So. It would be just a kind of a rubber stamp letter. Yeah, pass it muster, that kinda thing. But if it doesn't, we have to say why and according to, to what law. So when I said to Nelson, it's gonna be tight, I think you ought to. I never thought I'd hear myself say that I think you ought to delay it, but I did. He said, yeah, maybe we could do that. So I don't know. They'll talk about that tomorrow night.
Well, I, I'm not sure what's going on because the hearing was worn in the paper today. For May second.
No. Well, I think you can still cancel it.
Yeah, no, I'm just like, it was.
I think they can cancel it right up till.
I have a question. So then why do we, why do we have the draft April eleventh with the changes that the selectmen have made? And that they're gonna discuss these changes tomorrow night's meeting?
I, I'm not sure I, I'm following.
The book that you have right there in front of you. That's all this one. This is the email that Nelson sent me, the changes that they made. And took out twenty pages from our draft, our, our.
They took the table out in the back and they.
Regardless what they took out, it's still twenty pages less, but, so this date is April eleventh.
Yep, it should be April twelfth.
Well, okay.
Basically, Julie, what happened is Nelson gave me comments that I, that he had received from a number of people.
But wait before, but I was told this is the book and I had to sign that I, for an email, that this is their. Draft with the changes that they have for their meeting. So this should make their plenty of deadline date. From my understanding.
I think the point is if they have this public, if this meeting tomorrow is.
They're gonna make more changes tomorrow.
If any more, if there are any other changes that are.
Yeah.
Maybe there won't be, but.
Those aren't, however, however, that email was misleading, that's not binding. That they. The, the, the clock starts tomorrow, basically.
Do you want me to go over the process?
Yeah.
Okay, so Nelson gave me comments that he had received from various people.
Right.
Including Bob Jarvis and, and, and others. And he said. Address these. And so I did my best. I did add some things that weren't in the plan before.
Right.
To address comments in sort of a different way. In other words, there were, there were comments that basically talked about. Whether or not the town had to comply with state requirements. So I basically just added.
Put in the requirements.
What the requirements were, to, to clarify that. I, uh, Bob Jarvis had comments on certain aspects of economic, economic development sections. And I basically made all of the changes he suggested. And then Shannon had given me some, some comments, so I. Incorporated as much of those as I could and fit it all together. Um, I, um. There were some changes in the map that, and then Nelson gave me two, two or three sets of comments over different periods of time, which I edited.
Sure.
Uh, um, and then, um, he wanted a change in the map which. Reflected changing the.
Race track.
Race track to a commercial slash industrial district as opposed to just a commercial district. So we did that. Um, and those were all. There was originally an April eleventh, and then he came up with some more changes, so that became an April twelfth date. He looked at the April eleventh, gave me comments, and I redid it, and then I sent out an, like, April twelfth that I sent to him, and I think I sent to you.
Yeah, you did. I have.
Um. And then he asked me for a word version because he wanted to have that for the Select Board in case they wanted to make any changes. By tomorrow. In which case that'd be in April, what's tomorrow?
April eighteenth. And that is, cause Nelson says you include the date of the public hearing as your fifteen day period.
Right.
Where the wording says fifteen days prior to the public hearing. So I said, Nelson, that, that's up to you. Whichever one you think, include it or don't.
Probably will work, but I mean, if, if they make any change tomorrow night, they're, that are more than, you know.
Yeah.
Change this. Anything will be difficult because to get a, you're right, a printed copy.
So my understanding is that it has to be available to the public during those fifteen days. So. If it doesn't get to Julie by a day or two after that, or you don't make all the changes that they're gonna ask you to make, and all of a sudden. It's ten or eleven days prior to that warrant meeting.
Gets a little tight.
And somebody here in town just might say. No, that's, that's illegal. You can't do it.
Yeah, and they have time. Yeah.
Yeah. So I said, I said to Nelson, if it's too tight, change that May second meeting.
Yeah, the May second date came from what he thought was a hundred and twenty days from January seventeenth. Is that when you think they received it?
That's what Wenda said that they received it on the seventeenth.
So I, I found a little thing online that told me how many days, when was a hundred and twenty days from January seventeenth? There's anything. Everything's online. It told me May seventeenth, and I, I suggested, somebody else count my days.
And of course, you have to believe it because it's online.
Oh, I didn't believe it. So I asked someone else to check. Cause I started to count the days and I was getting all over the place. So I said, okay, that's just. You know. There's, somebody has invented something for everything.
On second, I mean, yeah.
So that's, that's why, so none of the changes, I think, but if anything, the only sub, what I would consider a substantive change was that commercial industrial. And that's, there's nothing really.
That's not earth shaking.
That's not earth shaking. Oh, and there was another, there was an area, like the area we were talking about. Um. Near Carpenter Hill with, where that tower is. That was forest. And Nelson had always wondered why that wasn't. I said, well, I don't know why it is either, because it doesn't actually show up in. As a major forest here, so we just changed that to R two.
Sure.
There you go. I mean, there's been.
Tower Road.
I did for that, yeah.
Did you read the changes? Have you, you did. You've been kinda keeping up with them, right? Have you seen any of them? So any comments about any of the changes? I mean, it's definitely in their, you know, in their lap now. And so far, I'm not alarmed at any, any of the changes. I. You always take it a little bit personal at first when you work on it that long, but for the most part.
You know, sometimes you just get the feeling that you're anti-poll. Some of the statements being made at the meetings, like you walk out the door and say. Who invented this thing that we were gonna turn panel into an art?
Right, right, right. Yeah, 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 yeah.
It's like going to the first meetings and we're gonna close the trailer parks.
Right.
That all comes.
Yeah.
Right. And actually, what I, what I sent to Mike was, um, cause I, I think that that vision statement came together really at the tail end. And it was too heavy on the arts.
We had two versions to consider of the vision statement.
I just took a couple paragraphs out and I put back in one on business and small business and. Uh, I just took them literally from another spot and just put them in there. So, and one on recreation and.
Right.
You know, hunters and sportsmen and those traditions of Powell, you know what I mean? And just took two of those arts paragraphs out. And I think it's a better vision because it was more.
There's still arts in there. Because we do have a lot of artists who were offended by some of.
Didn't you?
You're gonna offend somebody. Everything is, is right as possible, so, because it seems the, the more stuff you put in, the bigger target you are sometimes.
Yeah.
Try to keep it short.
But I, I mean, I thought that was fine to take out. It was too heavy on the arts. And I think taking out the eight points is, it's not gonna hurt the plan.
Bob and Nelson wanted those eight rules gone for large employers. Fine. There you go.
True.
I would hope if a large employer comes to town that they would have the good sense to, uh.
Bring some housing.
The stewards of the environment in our town.
Bring some housing with them.
Bring some housing.
Yeah. Well, maybe if, if there's places where people can make a living, they can build a house. Absolutely.
That's right.
If they can't make a living, they're not gonna build a house. That's the whole thing.
So those were, that's the way that process is unfolded.
Good. Were there any other, now I read through them. Are there any other, uh, changes that you wanna talk about that the Select Board's recommending or? Nothing jumped off the page out here?
There wasn't anything huge. There was one change that Nelson wanted to make to the energy section. I said that would be, create problems with what you're doing now, so I didn't wanna make that and he, he agreed.
Changing it all over again, right?
Yeah.
At least he read through it though. He, he did spend a lot of time on it.
Yeah.
Um, along those lines, I was, I was just. Uh, I just had another thought and it just came and went, which seems to happen a lot lately.
So we'll see what they wanna do tomorrow night.
Yep. And the timing of it. I mean, you know, Nelson was of the mindset that once you warn it, you have to have it. Well.
Yeah, I was surprised, I was surprised to see it worn.
We, we got snowed out of one.
Yeah.
You know?
Yeah.
You don't have to have them. Nobody's holding a gun to your head, but you gotta let the public know. You gotta let them know when a fifteen day period starts. That's all. That's the key. And, and this environment, in this town, I would definitely wanna make sure if I were on the Select Board. That there were fifteen clear, clearly worn, full days available before a public hearing. That was my only point. All right. Anything else?
Does that make sense to you? Does that all unfold? No? It doesn't always make sense to me either.
No. That's all right.
Changes are still coming. There could be more. That's the problem. That's what, that's why they're having a work session tomorrow night. That's what, that's why they're having a work session tomorrow night, to either vote on it as-is or make additional changes.
Yeah, I thought they were gonna have a work session last week, I thought that's-
Yeah.
But I guess not, on the plan.
We wanna make it explicitly clear that everybody has a voice.
Sure.
We may disagree, but everybody has a voice.
That's the way.
That's the way it is with me, I don't care about any, you know, the other stuff. I guess, if somebody wants to speak, then it should be addressed, I don't care who it is.
I agree.
Well, well.
All right.
Move to adjourn.
If, if there's nothing else, we got a motion to adjourn?
Oh, hey.
Wait, Julie, no, Julie says not adjournment.
No, okay.
You're not going anywhere.
Are we doing our work session?
Um, yes, I, we should, we should schedule our, the only reason I would wanna schedule a work session, what do you need to know by, let, let me ask that first.
I need seven days, I'm not waiting until like last Thursday, when you called me to see if my agenda was ready to warn. I send that out prior, before I leave to go to work.
I forgot.
Well, you just were talking about the five dates, I need five days.
While I'm on the phone, I'm going, Julie, did you? And I'm looking at it on my computer, and I went, okay, never mind this phone call.
Can I say something?
Yeah.
Can you make, can you adopt resolutions on, on work sessions?
Yeah, I believe so, I think we can, they're publicly warned meetings.
If there is a hearing on May second, then you need to provide them-
With that letter.
By May second, so you have to have-
Well, that's why I said to Nelson, if, if they're gonna have this meeting, with, rather than us have a special meeting to put that letter together, we could have a work session to do it, so yes, we're doing a work session.
On May first?
Yeah, and who knows, maybe you'll have some info for us and-
Are we doing six-thirty or seven?
Six-thirty or a work session.
Is May first a Tuesday?
Yes, well, that works out. Yes, so we have the DRB and one to choose the second. Which is interesting, because if they're a public hearing, no, that's at the school on the second.
So, is that gonna be your-
Space issue?
Is that gonna be your reorganization meeting too?
Um, no, because I don't even know if we'll have appointments by then, we might have appointments by then.
Supposed to have them this week, Thursday. But I don't know if everybody, they could put in their, their name right up to the last minute, that's what they said.
Yeah, okay.
How many will come?
How many?
We need three.
Three?
Yeah, we need three. Julie's stepping down, Bonnie and, um, and Henry. What's going on with Henry anyways, is he hanging in there or?
Uh, he's, he went back to Boston, his woman told me today.
Yeah, for treatment.
I, I don't know a lot, he went back, I mean, I don't think he went down there just to visit, he went to do a matter or something.
Or follow-up.
So, I can't, I can't think that.
Yeah, but he, he submitted a reservation, didn't he, Julie?
I think so.
Yeah, okay.
Or he, I don't know if he did, he just said that he wasn't.
Or he didn't put in, 'cause this-
He didn't put in to do another term.
March eighteenth he was done, so he didn't put in to do another one, so they're gonna appoint someone else. Well, Henry, if you're listening, we wish you well, little buddy. All right, now, I think we have a motion still on the table to adjourn.
Can I just throw in one last thing?
Before we adjourn, go ahead.
You will need a quorum.
On that, May, on that, May second.
People who can vote.
First.
May first. Yeah, that's, five of us have to show up, right? We're, we're all good, nobody's taking long, I know, I know.
That leaves me out.
Well, we're gonna drag Sid kicking and screaming out on that day. But, but that should be a short meeting, if we're not gonna have an official work, if we're not gonna sit and work on the energy section, 'cause that's all of our, our-
Yeah, I probably won't get how much.
I'm not gonna start working on the rest of the plan until these guys either pass it or do something with it, so-
Well, you can certainly give me comments on what I gave you on the first.
Okay, so why don't we do that at that work session, let's go over those, and get him to him beforehand if, if we can too, so he doesn't have to wait till the last minute. Because June is the deadline, right, June first, is that the end of, uh?
End of June, yeah.
That'd be, the end of June.
Mark Grantlin's on, so we're gonna-
I thought it was the end, end of May, beginning of June, that gives us a little more time. And that's the only reason I bring that up, if we can get comments to him, and he can start crunching them and working on them.
Yeah, where do you go?
That would be, uh-
He's gonna work until midnight.
You're gonna what?
He's gonna work till midnight.
Gonna be working, burning the midnight oil.
No, no, I'm, I'm not doing anything tomorrow night.
Now, once again-
No, I didn't say tomorrow.
We have a motion by Ronnie.
Second.
We have a second, if there's no other discussion, uh, all those in favor of, uh, saying goodnight? Aye? Any opposed? Thank you very much.